Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
As I stated yesterday when we had our work session, I always enjoy seeing the enthusiasm and all the camaraderie that has been shown. That's usually a good sign that we are amongst each other and wants to be among each other. And I'm so grateful to see that. So with that said, I'd like to welcome everyone here. As we know, this is the first meeting of the month of March with our council meeting. And so with that, I am calling the meeting to order at this time. And so with that, I'd like to call on Reverend James Platt to come and lead us with the invocation. He's from Allen Temple Amy Church. And then after that, Councilman Gordon will lead us with the prayers if we can stand and remain seated. Thank you.
Good morning, thank you for this opportunity, Mayor Lowe and to my city councilperson. It's Carter Johnson, amen. Let us pray. Holy One, known by many names and beyond all names, Spirit of life, Spirit of love, Spirit of community, Spirit of justice. First Lord God, let me say thank you for this day. Thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of good health we have even as we exit this pandemic. Thank you for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of wisely bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you for the freedom to embrace you or the freedom to reject you. Thank you for loving us even so from your boundless and gracious nature. In the scriptures, you have said that citizens are to obey the governing authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. We ask your blessings on these elected officials who have been called by you to lead the community in which we live, work, and play. Remind them, oh God, because we all forget from time to time, especially in the noisiness of what passes for political debate today. Remind them that they are not only leaders but also servants and that it is their divine responsibility and ours to serve the common good of all. I pray for our Phoenix City officials, elected and appointed, for the various levels of city government, and in particular for this assembled council. I am asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times. Grant them a sense of the welfare and true needs of your people. Grant them a keen thirst for justice and rightness. Grant them confidence in what is good and fitting. Grant them the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. Grant them personal peace in their lives and joy in their tasks. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved community. This we pray in the name of all that we hold sacred and holy, all that we hold good and right and true. May it be so. Ashay and amen.
Passion. Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Passion Platt. If you would stay if you would like to, but if you do not, it will not be held against you. And thank you, Councilman Gordon, for the prayers, leading up the prayers. At this time, council, I'd like to call on City Manager Mr. Wallace Honey as well as our best stepson, our HR Owen. Back there in the back in the corner, not in the dark though. Our HR Director Stephanie Chastain, one of the highlights that we do. And I know I'm being redundant, but these are sincere thank you to these people who give themselves and of their time as servants for this community. Mrs. Chastain?
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. As the mayor stated, this is a highlight for us. This is an opportunity for us to individually recognize those employees that reach their five-year incremental anniversaries and thank them for their hard work and dedication that they put in and their duties that they do for the city every day, serving our citizens. So we had two anniversaries for February. The first is Mr. Ricky Lowman with our Engineering and Public Works Department. He reached five years of service. Congratulations, Ricky. You're more than welcome to say a few words if you're comfortable doing that.
Say a few words, Ricky. Right here at the mic. At the mic right there.
Right here, Chris.
That's right, find that mic, Mr. Ricky.
Yeah, I'd like to see that. I'd like to see that the Lord, the Lord works and all that. I appreciate everything what he did for me, everything else. The Lord take care of me all the time, thank you.
Thank you, Ricky. Appreciate it, Ricky. You got about twenty to twenty-five more to do now, okay?
With our police department, we have Sergeant James Bealn with twenty-five years of service.
I just want to thank the city for their opportunity.
Appreciate it, James.
He doesn't need a microphone.
At least five more.
We haven't talked about this.
Tell me, how many you already done in the military?
I got twenty-seven there, twenty-five there, sir.
Oh, really? Well, the other five will be okay. Again, thank you all so much for what you all do. We certainly appreciate it. Thank you, Ricky. Thank you, James, for what you all do. And we certainly appreciate you all. And one of the greatest things that we can say sincerely and this council is saying this sincerely, thank you all for what you do. Next council on the agenda is a proclamation recognizing Arbor Day. So at this time, I'd like to call on our clerk, Mrs. Lee, for the reading of the proclamation. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas Phoenix City has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree planting ways. Now therefore, I, Eddie N. Lowe, Mayor of the City of Phoenix City, and on behalf of council, do hereby proclaim this day as Arbor Day in the City of Phoenix City. And I urge all citizens to support efforts to care for our trees and woodlands and to support our city's community forestry program. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations.
Thank you, Mrs. Lee. Gentlemen, thank you for your passion. I know it's off-cycle, but we are so appreciative that you have the passion to put it back on-cycle and we will do it, I guess, sooner than later because we're off-cycle. But on behalf of myself and the council, we do want to present you with this proclamation. And again, we are so grateful for your passion. So keep that passion and we all love people with passion because generally it shows their sincerity. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
And tell Mr. Bikes we miss him this time, but thank you all for the passion and what you all have done.
Yeah, thank y'all.
The mic is yours.
We are, we had kind of started, y'all are probably wondering, why am I here again so soon? I was just here in the fall. But generally, we want to try to get our Arbor Day proclamation done right before Arbor Day. We missed it a little bit this year. We just had it up at the Garrett Harrison Stadium. And we so appreciate the Phoenix City Tree Board and the council for providing those funds to give away those trees. We had a very big turnout, thanks to Parks and Rec for letting us use that location. It's very good for people in the city. And this is a proclamation that is required to keep us a Tree City USA, which we have been for many, many years. So we'll be back in February of next year, and we thank y'all so much.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Proceeding on, council, under the city clerk. At this time, council, at the pleasure of the council, we will take these in one vote. It is the approval of the regular scheduled meeting minutes for the February the fourteenth work session as well as February, February the fifteenth council meeting. So with the pleasure of the council, we will take those in one setting. And at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion for approval of the February fourteenth work session as well as February fifteen council meeting. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion. But Councilman Day, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Gordon. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lowe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next council on the agenda is the approval of the call meeting minutes for the redistricting of our city. So at this time, council, I would like to ask for a motion for the approval of the February ninth, twenty-twenty-two redistricting public hearing in District One. At this time, may I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion. By Councilman Gordon, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Johnson. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Chastain.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lowe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Proceeding on, council, at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion for approval of the February the sixteenth, twenty-twenty-two redistricting public hearing in District Two. May I have a motion to approve, please?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Councilwoman Johnson. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Bailey. Okay, we have the motion and the second. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lowe?
Yes.
Thank you.
And also, council proceeding under the redistricting, I'd like to ask for a motion for the February the twenty-third redistricting public hearing held in District Three. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion for approval. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Bailey. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Day. We have the motion and the second. At this time, I'd like to call for the vote. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Chastain.
Mayor Lowe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now, council, at this time, I'd like to ask you all, are there any unfinished business that needs to be discussed? Okay, seems that there's not any. At this time, we will proceed under resolutions. And under resolution for administration, is we have a resolution in reference to the satisfaction of a special assessment on property located at four oh one Fifteenth Avenue South, Lockhart Development Company, LLC, is the owner. At this time, I'd like to call for Mrs. Lee for the reading of the resolution. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas Resolution Number twenty twenty dash two twenty-three, adopted on the first day of September twenty twenty, affixed the cost for the demolition of an unsafe structure located at four oh one Fifteenth Avenue South, Phoenix City, Alabama, owner being Lockhart Development Company, LLC, twenty seventeen tax sale. A special assessment was filed against the property taxes in the amount of two thousand nine hundred fifty dollars to be collected by the Russell County Revenue Commissioner. Said special assessment having been recorded in volume one thirty-seven, page two forty-three in the Judge of Probate of Russell County. And whereas the full amount of two thousand nine hundred fifty dollars was paid to the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, on February the eleventh, twenty twenty-two, and said special assessment is entitled to be removed. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby constitute and appoint the Judge of Probate of Russell County, Alabama, as its true and lawful attorney, or in its name to enter in the margin of the records where said special assessment is recorded. Full satisfaction thereof, hereby ratifying and confirming any and all acts of said attorney in fact about said premises. Be it further resolved that a certified copy of this resolution be forwarded to the Revenue Commissioner of Russell County to release said special assessment against the property. Passed, approved, and adopted this first day of March twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, Mrs. Lee. Council, we've heard the resolution. At this time, I would like to ask for a motion, please, council. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Day. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Gordon. Comments or discussion? All right, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lowe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Proceeding on, council, under administration for resolutions is we have a resolution in reference to the satisfaction of a special assessment on property located at three eleven South Seal Road, Lockhart Development Company, LLC, twenty seventeen tax sale, which is the owner. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas Resolution Number twenty twenty-one dash thirty-three, adopted on the seventeenth day of February twenty twenty-one, affixed the cost for the demolition of an unsafe structure located at three eleven South Seal Road, Phoenix City, Alabama, owner being Lockhart Development Company, LLC, twenty seventeen tax sale. A special assessment was filed against the property taxes in the amount of four thousand four hundred dollars to be collected by the Russell County Revenue Commissioner. Said special assessment having been recorded in volume one thirty-nine, page fifty-two in the Office of the Judge of Probate of Russell County. And whereas the full amount of four thousand four hundred dollars was paid to the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, on February the eleventh, twenty twenty-two, and said special assessment is entitled to be removed. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby constitute and appoint the Judge of Probate of Russell County, Alabama, as its true and lawful attorney, or in its name to enter in the margin of the records where said special assessment is recorded. Full satisfaction thereof, hereby ratifying and confirming any and all acts of said attorney in fact in and about said premises. Be it further resolved that a certified copy of this resolution be forwarded to the Revenue Commissioner of Russell County to release said special assessment placed on the property. Passed, approved, and adopted this first day of March twenty twenty-two.
Thank you again, Mrs. Lee. Council, we've heard the reading of the resolution. At this time, I would like to ask for a motion, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, motion, Councilman Gordon, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Day? We have the motion and the second. Council, are there any comments or discussions? All right, call for the vote, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lowe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And council proceeding on, under administration of resolutions, we have a resolution in reference to the satisfaction of a special assessment on property located at seven oh seven Eighth Street, Robert R. Francis owner. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas Resolution Number twenty twenty dash one eighty-six, adopted on the twenty-first day of July twenty twenty, affixed the cost for the demolition of an unsafe structure located at seven oh seven Eighth Street, Phoenix City, Alabama, owner being Robert R. Francis. A special assessment was filed against the property taxes in the amount of three thousand eight hundred dollars to be collected by the Russell County Revenue Commissioner. Said special assessment having been recorded in volume one thirty-six, page one twenty in the Office of the Judge of Probate of Russell County. And whereas the full amount of three thousand eight hundred dollars was paid to the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, on February the eleventh, twenty twenty-two, and said special assessment is entitled to be removed. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby constitute and appoint the Judge of Probate of Russell County, Alabama, as its true and lawful attorney, or in its name to enter in the margin of the records where said special assessment is recorded. Full satisfaction thereof, hereby ratifying and confirming any and all acts of said attorney in fact in and about said premises. Be it further resolved that a certified copy of this resolution be forwarded to the Revenue Commissioner of Russell County to release said special assessment placed on the property. Passed, approved, and adopted this first day of March twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, Mrs. Lee.
Yes.
Council, we've heard the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Councilwoman Johnson. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Bailey. Okay, council, any comments or discussion? Okay, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lowe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now, council proceeding on the Parks and Recreation Department. We have a resolution in reference to authorize and direct the mayor and the city manager to sign a contract with MDS Lighting Incorporated for stage roofing at the Phoenix City Amphitheater, April the first, twenty twenty-two, through July the fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Phoenix City desires to provide quality entertainment for its citizens. And whereas the City of Phoenix City would like to enter into a contract with MDS Lighting Incorporated for stage roofing at the Phoenix City Amphitheater, April the first, twenty twenty-two, through July the fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. And whereas the City of Phoenix City agrees to pay a total of fifty thousand dollars to be paid to MDS Lighting Incorporated upon completion of installation. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the mayor and city manager, as authorizing officials, are hereby authorized and directed to sign the contract with MDS Lighting Incorporated for stage roofing at the Phoenix City Amphitheater, April the first, twenty twenty-two, through July the fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Passed, approved, and adopted this first day of March twenty twenty-two.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Lee. Council, we've heard the resolution. At this time, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Day. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Gordon. Comments or discussion, council?
Yes, sir, Mayor. I would like to ask this question. It's going to be for the four months. And once they install the roof on the amphitheater, they're responsible for the damage if it's storm or something calm? They're responsible for everything, is that right? And when they do that time in, they're going to take it down?
That's right.
Okay, it's more, you cannot go in that way. It's still getting more stable down, is that right?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Thank you all. Any other comments or discussion? If not, council, at this time, I'd like to call for the vote. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lowe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the Parks and Recreation Council is a resolution in reference to authorize and direct the mayor and city manager to enter into a contract with International Creative Management Partners, LLC, doing business as ICM Partners for Samantha Fish to perform at the Phoenix City Amphitheater on April the second, twenty twenty-two in an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Phoenix City desires to provide quality entertainment for its citizens. And whereas the City of Phoenix City would like to enter into a contract with International Creative Management Partners, LLC, doing business as ICM Partners for Samantha Fish to perform at the Phoenix City Amphitheater, April the second, twenty twenty-two. And whereas the City of Phoenix City agrees to pay a total of fifteen thousand dollars, split into two equal parts, with the first to be paid upfront as a deposit and the other to be paid to the band at sound check. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the mayor and city manager, as authorizing officials, are hereby authorized and directed to sign the contract with International Creative Management Partners, LLC, doing business as ICM Partners for Samantha Fish to perform at the Phoenix City Amphitheater, April the second, twenty twenty-two. Passed, approved, and adopted this first day of March twenty twenty-two.
Thank you. Council, we've heard the reading of this resolution. At this time, I would like to ask the council for a motion, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Gordon. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Bailey. My right ear is closer than my than my left ear.
Council Day, Miss, Ms.,
We have the motion and the second. Okay? Any comments or discussion? Okay, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lowe?
Yes.
Thank you.
And also, council on the Parks and Recreation is a resolution in reference to authorize the mayor and the city manager to enter into a contract with Red Eleven Music for Muscadine Bloodline to perform at the Phoenix City Amphitheater on June the third, twenty twenty-two in an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Phoenix City desires to provide quality entertainment for its citizens. And whereas the City of Phoenix City would like to enter into a contract with Red Eleven Music for Muscadine Bloodline to perform at the Phoenix City Amphitheater, June the third, twenty twenty-two. And whereas the City of Phoenix City agrees to pay a total of fifteen thousand dollars, split into two equal parts, with the first to be paid upfront as a deposit and the other to be paid to the band at sound check. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the mayor and city manager, as authorizing officials, are hereby authorized and directed to sign the contract with Red Eleven Music for Muscadine Bloodline to perform at the Phoenix City Amphitheater, June the third, twenty twenty-two. Passed, approved, and adopted this first day of March twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, Mrs. Lee.
Yes, sir.
Council, we've heard the resolution. At this time, council, I'd like to ask for a motion, please. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, motion by Councilman Day. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Johnson. We have the motion and the second. Council, are there any comments or discussion? All right, Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lowe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And at this time, council, I'd like to call on our city attorney, Mr. Jimmy.
Mayor and council, we have one claim on the agenda today. It's a notice of claim filed by Corey Watson Attorneys on behalf of Miriam Dale Raines. Ms. Raines was at the, our building down on the lake that the art council leases from us. There's a lease agreement there. We were renovating the property. us. There's a lease agreement there. We were renovating the property. No one was supposed to be on it. She decided to go down there. She fell off of a platform in the back of the building. Like I said, she wasn't supposed to be there. Plus, the lease agreement caused for the art council to carry a hundred thousand dollar liability insurance policy on the property. And based on those things, I recommend denial of the claim.
All right, thank you, Mr. Grant. Council, we have all heard the recommendation from our attorney. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion for that recommendation. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Gordon. May I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Bailey. At this time, council, I'd like to call for the vote. Mrs. Lee?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Day?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordy?
Yes.
Mayor Lo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Lee. Thanks to everyone, the department head. At this time, council, I would like to ask if there's any council member who would like to say anything at this time before we adjourn?
I guess, Mayor, I'd love to just elaborate, if I may. Just want to remind the locals, everybody about the locals, elected fellows of plenty, ladies and gentlemen, locals, elected fellows of plenty. We held here on Friday, March the fourth, from eleven thirty to one. And we're going to have plenty of food for everybody. Hope that you can attend, especially elected people that are here in this room. And there are going to be also more folks that are not elected, but a community leader as well. This is something that we are trying to re-improve the relationship, as I said before, between the state, county, and city government. This is the purpose of this elected fellowship of mine. I think we started this approximately five years ago. Last year, we did not have it due to the pandemic. That's why we didn't have it last year. Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Day. Any, anyone else?
Yeah, but just one second, please. I know you mentioned this yesterday, Mayor. Frank Roberts, one of our mayors from nineteen seventy-four to seventy-seven, actually, he was our last mayor with the old type of government before this type of government came in. Passed away peacefully. Said he was, is, was, is a relative of mine. His wife and my father were double first cousins, even closer than normal first cousins with the way the marriage of their parents. Anyhow, passed away peacefully. But please remember him and his family in your prayers. Frank, I'm assuming was around ninety-two, ninety-three years old. I know he was a little older than my father would have been. But mayor back then carried a lot of responsibility that people don't realize, back in the seventies and the sixties and the fifties and all that, to the cleanup. Today, luckily, we have a city manager, have a different type of government that came in force in October of seventy-seven. The people of our city chose to change our type of government from a three-person commission to a five-person with a mayor and a city manager. But before that, the mayor, actually, with the help of, I guess, what you would call a city manager at that time, who was the city clerk, and I don't mean to demean it by saying it that way by any means, but the city clerk had the job of running that part of the city on a daily basis. And the mayor had the rest of the city on a daily basis, but had to let all the department heads make all of their decisions, and then they'd answer to the mayor. So it was a full-time job with very, very limited part-time pay. So it really did take a special person at that time that loved their city, wanted to help, wanted to make a difference. And I know that Frank truly did. He ran a full-time business since around nineteen fifty at Red Dot Motors. He had a family, lovely wife, three children, one of them special needs, that took full-time. He's in tired-up life from probably around nineteen fifty or fifty-one until this past Saturday. So that's over sixty years being in business. And then just being a good quality gentleman, a good Christian man, and someone that loved the local people, family, and God. So if you would keep his family in your prayers, Ann and him have been married, I'm assuming probably right around about nineteen fifty. So they've been married a long time. She's a very special lady. Frank was a good man, special person. And but keep Bill, Laurie, and Jeffrey in your prayers. They're all my cousins. And as always, it's a tough time to go through. This is a time that all of us are going to face it. We're going to face it with glory and mercy, and know that the Lord loves us and prepares a place for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
Councilmember Bailey, that was some great history there. I had the opportunity to meet Roberts down at the...
Carlisle.
Yeah, mhm. Well, the special new child. He's an adult now, but good history. I appreciate that. I just want to thank the two individuals and congratulate them, really, on the years of service, too. And that's thirty years there with two people. So it just shows how great the city is and the time that you put in and the rewards that will come out of that. So thank Mr. Lowman and the other gentleman. I can't call him right now by name, but thank them for their service. And also, I would like to thank Reverend Platt for coming by, doing the invocation for us. It's always good to see our ministers in the District Two. I'm just so appreciative. And thanks to the citizens for allowing me to serve. But I just want to, right now, just ask our citizens to continue to pray for the families and the government over in Ukraine, because they are really going through something right now. We are just so privileged to live in these United States. And so, let's continue to keep them uplifted in prayer and keep our community as well and each other in prayer. Thank you so much, Mayor, for the opportunity to speak.
Mr. Gordon? Mr. Hump? Again, thank you all so much. We certainly thank every employee that represent the city, that serves the city. And we can't say thank you enough when it's done sincerely. And I can assure you that this council will always say thank you sincerely because, again, we have a purpose, and that purpose is to look out for the citizen of this community. And I'm so grateful to be a part of this team and of you all, team. And I just want to ask that we continue to stay the service that we are, to give of ourselves, to think of others more than we do ourselves, and even more importantly, more than ever before. Let's be a lifter and not a leaner.
Mayor, before you dismiss, I would like to say this. I failed to announce that Major General Donovan will be out of speaker Friday. I'm sorry. I failed to mention that. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay.